This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the regular council meeting, August 7th, 2023, to order at 7:00 PM. All rights for the pleasurable legion.
Our pleasurable legion to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, are any additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the agenda tonight?
I'll move to accept the agenda.
So moved, Counselor Wagner. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Webb. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Ash.
Aye.
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Counselor Wagner.
Aye.
Derek Holbert.
Aye.
Ocean Perry.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Are there any presentations tonight? Okay. Mayor's report. I'd just like to talk about this last weekend. I believe it was the 66th Annual Vernonia Friendship Jamboree. There was a lot of people on Saturday. And I don't think anyone got seriously injured or hurt. And I think everyone remained safe. I didn't hear too many complaints. So congratulations to the Jamboree Committee and all those involved. Another successful year in my eyes. Anybody have anything to add on that?
The only non-injury that I witnessed was right after the parade when the grader trying to get you downhooked the car with the blade. It was pretty interesting. We were sitting there at Island Grill in Little Cubby. You hear this kind of funk? And then the grader's going by and the cars... Luckily, there wasn't a car in front of it. It was sliding along the curb. We're going with the vehicle up the street. It started to climb the curb when he got it stopped. Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have. Council Committee Meeting Report tonight.
I have one.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So the Public Works Committee met on the 25th of July. Pretty much just informational. I think you'll see it in the minutes in our packet also. They're still working on finding out from West Oregon Electric the street lighting, what they're using specifically. I don't know if there'll be how much discussion of, you know, what could you go to? Would that, what would that look like gathering that? I did happen to see a comment on Facebook about the lighting downtown, how it's really white. And some, so some people were noticing that. Somebody said, yeah, more of a yellow tone would be maybe more appropriate. Again, that's goal. We're gonna run out and buy a bunch of lights and stick them in. But maybe as a replacement, once we figure out what we want, that might look weird. I don't know. I think she lives still gathering information on public work standards to kind of wrap her head around that issue, if there's any issues or something we should be doing. The storm drain markers that we talked about and gave the okay to do. Ben threw the monkey wrench in it there. And I'm glad he did because I think ODOT's coming in this next year. And so if we were to replace all those, they'd probably tear them out. So we're gonna hold off. What we're gonna do is probably do some around the supermarket, high visible visibility areas. They're markers for, you know, this goes to the stream and there's fish presence. It's actually a nice round metal disc that'd be epoxy'd down. And we were like, well, could we epoxy them down and then pry them up? And then we're like, well, then we'd probably be damaging them. And not there timely, they're gonna go away. Figured we'd kind of regroup on. Coal tar issue. I wrote down, we still need to educate. So I think Michael was talking about maybe an article in the paper. And we still need to find out availability on the area. If it's still products that are floating around. I did talk to Gina M. Shaw at NAPA. And their contractor was out of Washington. She was supposed to email me. I was gonna call them and talk to them just to see. But if they're out of Washington, I doubt because they got a ban in Washington on it. So, and then they're sending recommendations on the East Street Trail Connection, which is in our packet. That's all we have.
Okay. Dale. Getting back to your street light issue that you just talked about, Dale. I, my street, uh, street light went out. And it used to be a grapefruit color. They, they put in a new LED and they're really white. And so I, I think that's what, what the difference is. So Jamie told me that they're going to mostly all LEDs now. I don't know. Just some information for you guys. I will be attending a senior board meeting this coming Friday, 10 o'clock. So be able to report on the 21st on that. Cemetery Committee Meeting have been kind of nullified and voided until we get another member. So just wanted to inform the city on that. We are no longer meeting until we get another body on the board. So. Any other board meeting reports?
No.
Okay. Topics on the floor.
I have two. I believe Janice wants to speak during her topic. So the only other one would be Richard Stein.
Okay.
So I have like three things to say in about two minutes each. I'm gonna go for short. The first one has to do with volunteerism. Mine.
Would you state your name and address for the record?
Richard. 1137 Rodgeu Heights Avenue, Vernonia. Okay?
Yep, thank you.
As many of you know, I've given, I've built and given children's features, children's, uh, the climbing wall, climbing nets, you know, to parks. I built them around before from the Haylen River Campground. And I am just completing a new project. Most of, almost all the wood I got yesterday because everybody contributed wood to me from over there. And it's a hopping pass. And they're, they're in different heights. And kids hop from one to the other to the other. It's a very, it's a very sweet thing. And I think it goes very well in the Haylen River. And I'm going to the Parks Committee meeting to talk about it. Thoughts on that? Okay. Second one is, I got involved. When I was last here, I talked about how important volunteerism is to me. And I think it is to Vernonia. So I decided to do something. I formed an informal organization called Vernonians for Seniors. And what I did is I created a form of advertising. I took a board and it's called Volunteer Wish For. And if somebody had a need, I wouldn't photograph in a story photograph, one photograph, what described that need. For example, a woman with arthritic hands couldn't pot her own plants. Okay, she wanted a volunteer to help her pot her plants. I took a picture of the pots and the plants and the potty mix. And it was clear that that was about what the person was gonna do. And then she had a little statement at the bottom, hi, I have arthritic hands. I need help potty my plants. Is there anybody out there who would just help me do that? If so, would you put your name and your phone number? Because there's no time. We're gonna invite a senior to put a phone number on anyway. And so, and I'll call you back. And so that turned out, somebody said, I'll do it. And I coordinated with the person who wanted it and who was gonna do it and worked out great. And it was a bit of community building. It was a bit of volunteering. It was a bit of assistance for seniors. And I thought, this is good. And so I talked about it at breakfast. I go to breakfast seven days a week at Martin's. And people there, and there's a guy there who I didn't know, but probably many of you do know, Tim Buchanan. I'm describing the, he's a retired farmer. I'm describing this whole volunteer process. And he's getting more and more interested. I said, you wanna be part of this? And he said, yes. So Tim and I are partnering to do this. So the next case was somebody who had moved into a trailer. And the steps were the metal steps to the trailer. But he was so injured, he couldn't navigate those steps. It was clear he needed wooden steps. And I thought, where am I gonna get a discount on Lumber? Because that's hard to do. So I went to Craig, no market. Went to Jay, no market. And I said, who will give me a discount on lumber? I think Home Depot. Now, this is mega giant, Home Depot. So I contacted manager. I explained to, and what I'm thinking of is it's a great idea, but managers don't have the authority. Call corporate. This is the person you call. Three phone calls later, they agree to serve. Excuse me, it's very emotional. Vernonians for Seniors with discounts on anything that has to do with helping them restore their property. Whatever you name it, they're committed to doing. So the first job I did last week was the set of stairs for this guy. And it was $87.46 worth of supplies from Home Depot to do the stairs. Do you remember my portion was at that? Five cents. And it was only five cents because every single thing has a SKU number. And that SKU number has to go through a machine to deal with inventory. And they must make a charge. The charge is one cent per thing that I took through. And I was floored. I was thinking 10% maybe, but it. I didn't know they were convicted to this town. So people got enthused. Now I have today, C.C. Bell, her husband's 86, he can't navigate. His steps are rotten. I can get all of it free, basically free. I can get the work done free. And this is community building. It's volunteerism building. When you first got elected, we sat at Marius and we talked about, what is a vision that the city has for itself? And after I talked with you, I spent hours with your mom because she had a vision for what this city is and should be. And yesterday, I'm sitting talking to a young family at the log show. And they love Vernonia. This is the first time here, but they fell in love. And I asked them, what do you think Vernonia should be? And they said exactly what your mom said. Now, you're gonna recognize this. I mean, I went to Craig and I said, what do you think? He said, I want it on a sign in my store. So for those of you who don't know, a vision is generally what your idealized version of what your town would become. You gotta imagine Silicon Valley had an idealized version that in 100 years, they would be the heart of technology in the world. That's a vision. AT&amp;T, when they got Ref Ma Bell, they said, we want to have instantaneous communication between any two points in the universe. I think it's the world at that time. Later on, when they did cell phones and cell towers, it became the universe. That's a vision statement for our future. Vernonia is unique. Vernonia is unique. This is what both women said to me. Vernonia is now, needs to be maintained. So this is going in Craig's job. And I had stopped Stephanie and said, hey, you know, would you guys be interested in having one at City Hall? But then it's a motto, it's a mission. It's just Craig's getting it. But I think it's what we're about. And I think this jamboree proved it. And that's my presentation.
Thank you very much, Richard.
You're welcome. See you, guys.
Thank you for your work. Janice.
Oh, I think she's doing it during the topic.
During the donation of the.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Good, okay. Okay, Cassette Agenda for Acceptance Cemetery Committee Minutes for May 2023. Parks Committee Meeting Minutes for June 2023. Public Works Committee Meeting Minutes for June 2023. Any discussion or question?
I'll move to accept the Cassette Agenda for Acceptance.
So moved. Is there a second? Second? Seconded by Counselor Norman. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Wagner.
Aye.
Derek Holbert.
Aye.
Counselor Webb. Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Counselor Ash.
Aye.
Ocean Perry.
EQ Cassette Agenda for Approval City Council Meeting Minutes for July 17th, 2023. Okay, anyone like to make a motion to accept these meeting minutes?
I'll move to accept the city council meeting minutes from July 17th, 2023.
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Webb. Call the roll, please, Stephanie.
Derek Holbert.
Aye.
Counselor Ash.
Aye.
Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Counselor Wagner.
Aye.
Ocean Perry.
Any unfinished business tonight? Okay, new business, staff report. Project Priority Work Session.
It's not a report, but it's a request from you guys to central the priority, resetting the priorities work session. So you'll also see before you two calendars. And I had asked you guys to bring your availability. So is there any that you guys wish to?
Question. Um, you want us to come with our priority order, right?
Well, no.
Tiny bit of homework?
What we talked about coming with is any new projects you wanted added. Then we'll have the list there. We'll add those to it and then you guys would prioritize after.
Okay.
So come with any new kind of pet projects you're thinking of that need to be on the priority project.
And then we can bring the results to the next meeting for adoption.
Yeah.
Do not work for you, Dale?
Hmm. 17th doesn't work for me.
Of August?
Yeah, August.
Any other days?
Everything else is during the day, so it's.
I can't do the 24th, 25th, or 28th of August.
Me neither.
And I can't do the 7th or 25th of September.
Rick?
Yeah, I'm, I'm out of town. Well, I can't do the 20, we can't do the 21st. But I'm free any other time. So the 24th and 25th, I can't do.
No, 10th, 11th, 24th, 25th, September 1st, 8th, 14th.
Oh?
I'm open. The day I need off is on already marked off.
Perfect. Anybody care to make a proposal?
How about the 15th?
Yeah.
The next Tuesday? 6:30?
Fine with me.
Good for me.
We didn't ask Josette, but.
No, I'm here. My day's already on there.
Got it.
Yeah.
You're sharpie.
Like meeting staff are already on there.
Yep.
6:30?
Good, that was easy.
Preparation, the jobs.
She's so happy.
Very proud.
Okay. Public Works Committee, Committee Recommendation, E Sewer, E Street Sewer Project. I believe that's just informational tonight from the staff.
Well, and the committee secretary's here if you wanted to ask any questions.
Okay. So. Everybody get a chance to read it on page 11? Okay. Any questions?
Why is this so important?
Well, that section of North Louisiana that's flooded right now is paid for some huge locks that are really difficult to walk on. So if people wanna see this ended up looking like that, that would be a more walkable surface, not necessarily being media or climate training, but it would be something that would promote the use as a connection.
Yeah. It is part of our bigger sidewalk trail connectivity.
A master plan that we've been working on, our possession management plan. It's a missing link.
So that this is something we could do just with our own staff and materials, it sounds like?
Well, so the E Street Sewer is getting the upgrade there. They wanted this recommendation to be in place. I've mentioned it already for the design of the engineer, but for the finished product to be left as they're stating here. So they're just doubling the awareness that they do want it to be finished without just, yeah.
Not as additional project as part of the.
Right, as part of the, just making sure it's written in the plan and it happens.
Okay.
Hey, anything else? Thank you for being here. Staff report, donation for Highway 26 Vernonia Sign.
This staff report is from myself. We received that sign many years ago. And Pride kind of disbanded the group that had participated in putting it together and having it placed there was kind of no longer. So the city was the, kind of took hold of it as we do a lot of things. But it has been deteriorating for some time now. And I'd been working with Janice. She was trying originally to have Intercultural Society take it on. But now she found a new group that's willing to take it on. So Janice is here to speak about that.
Welcome, Janice.
My name is Janice McQuire. I live at 58329 Wilson Cloud Road in Vernonia. I'm resident of 10 years. And it's my passion to watch our community grow. It's kind of exciting to hear what was just spoken about because, Rick, you were talking to me about the little stand, little locksmith at the lake. And we now have that and we're backing our town grow. And we feel like that sign is not representative of all of the things that we've done to grow our community. And tourism is a really crucial part of our community. Three different times, I tried to coordinate efforts to fix that sign. And Josette's been wonderful. And then, you know, very well-hearted and intended volunteers went down and picked upon themselves to do it. And I would like it done right, once and done. And I would like input from the community of a respectful to our history, respectful to our current day town, and not a joke about what piece is gonna be missing off of the sign the next time somebody drives to the coast. So Intercultural Society is still more than happy to help with it. But we are also members of the, they're wonderful people that contribute in many other ways in our community. And they would like to take custody of the sign, do it responsibly in coordination with other people here in the community that have already volunteered funds and assistance, along with hopefully a hands-on art, something where we can involve kids and stuff so that they can actually paint little portions of the sign and participate. So it's actually a community building event at the same time. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much. I think it's a wonderful idea. In fact, I, I've been, this last year, I, I was wanting to redo it myself and bring it back to Vernonia. And so I took it upon myself to do a little research and find out who exactly is the property owners. And so I actually did that about two months ago. And so I have all that information for you, through Josette. Actually, the property owners are Lyle and Nikki Evers. And I talked to them on the phone about a month ago and gained approval for us to remove the trailer. And then we're more than welcome to bring the sign back and put it in its exact spot, so.
So I actually need to speak to that.
Pardon me?
I actually need to speak to that.
Okay.
We cannot necessarily remove the sign. Reparation will have to be a coordinated effort on site potentially due to it being grandfathered in and the sign laws right next to the highway. So we will make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's that there are some laws about signs being within that vicinity. Once it's removed, it's removed. It's not grandfathered in.
It's a private, it's on private property.
But it's within a certain vicinity of the highway. I got that from ODOT. So I promise you, ODOT, our i's and cross our t's. I don't wanna remove it and then find out, you know, red tape is in our way. But I very much appreciate that they are giving that permission. And it might be a slide-by-night with the permission swap out. But whatever it is, it's gonna be within, you know, the acceptable way of doing things to make sure that they're still a better representative center.
I think it has to do with the billboard law.
Okay.
ODOT may have rules that we didn't look into.
Sure.
Janice has looked into, yeah.
Two things. One, yes, thank you for, I was gonna ask because I know that has been a stumbling block for a long time. And we don't wanna lose that spot because of the grandfathering of that time. There's other people down there know it more than I do, but I do know that that's been a requirement, don't touch. The other thing is, are you collecting donations for money for this?
I'm gonna let the president of our council speak today.
Uh, we are now a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation. So yes, we'll collect as much donations as we need to help others.
Okay. I have money tonight, so let me give that to you before you are off.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm excited about that.
Well, I, yeah, I just need a motion from you guys and then Joe and I can sign a bill of donation and all.
I will move that we approve the donation of the, hey, it's Devon's Vernonia Sign. Vernonia, Oregon, and authorized city administrator to sign the bill of donation.
So moved. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Norman. You call the roll, please, Stephanie.
Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Derek Holbert.
Aye.
Counselor Ash.
Aye.
Counselor Wagner.
Aye.
Motion, period.
Okay, business from the department. Doesn't look like we have.
No, he slept on the air mattress all weekend, so he wasn't gonna be here.
What he said, yeah.
To be in the police department for the jamboree.
Well, the police report's on page 14 or 15. So. Okay, any ordinances or resolutions? Any correspondence? City Administrator Report.
Hey, so we're, the EQ got back to me on the well testing. And we have some items we're gathering from them ahead of them scheduling the well testing that I needed to get from Mary Ann, just background. Has, did it ever produce, you know, kind of some history on it up there on notes? Once I send them all that information back, then they'll schedule that. The cable did, as of the date of this packet going out, we just had the cable, the logging, old logging cable left a string through the ballards of the grandstand demo. And so that's all complete now. It will ultimately need three-quarter inch minus to dress it. It's inch and a half bigger rock. But we're just kind of letting that settle in and then we'll dress it at a further date. The applications in for the lake docks, now we wait for ODFW. They did call me with one question. They couldn't. They couldn't find in their online records that ODFW had participated in the original docks. But I'm thinking it was far enough back that it was paper applications, not online. So if your dad has any pictures or stuff that can trigger me to getting to a newspaper article that would state who participated in the original docks funding, that would be really helpful because I searched through the state historic ones for the independent, but not all the independents are on there at the time. It would have been like nineties.
Two thousand, the year two thousand.
Are you sure of that?
Dale.
Well, but there's, there's two different things. There's the docks going in, then there was the railings getting added.
No, this was for the dock going in.
This was for the dock.
The footing for the, the attachment for.
In the year two thousand?
Two thousand.
Okay.
I have a picture, Dale, actually digging the footing for that.
Okay, because that's what I need to help Marty with our application. They also did request that I apply for state marine board funding, potentially for the walk-on docks. And at least get that paperwork prepared so that it looks like when they call us to review our application, we're going to multiple funding sources for our project, not just them, because that will heighten their liking of the project. So I'm preparing that. The SCA ODOT, as we stated, that already got turned in for pretty much finishing all the marginal streets and doing chip sealing on the tree streets. But we will not hear about that until usually the fall is when we hear whether or not we've been successful. Still no ETA on the guardrail at OA Hill. I don't, they may just leave it there till they have nothing else to do, tipped like that, but it's still there. I did send two emails and left a voicemail about the ETA for the Storm Ready City sign so that we could schedule a dedication and didn't, as of Friday, didn't get anything back from her. FEMA has noticed the city of Vernonia that they will be doing a community assistance visit in September to review the practices and policies of the city of Vernonia's implementing the rules and regulations in the floodplain. This may have something to do with the combining of the essential salmon habitat and FEMA's regulations as they meet in the riparian and the extension of the riparian setback from the essential salmon habitat. So we're, it's like an all-day where they come and look at all of our documents, we do different things, we show them different things, we go to lunch, and then we go to site visits. Kind, when you're, kind, oh, go ahead.
I have a question on that.
Yep.
So are they going to be evaluating houses as well since they never did any site visits post 2007?
Currently, they're not evaluating houses. They're evaluating things they see that we don't have floodplain development permits for, which we believe we have everything. I mean, we've been, our goal's always been compliance with citizens and not punitive. So I think every new fence we have a permit for that's in the floodplain and new fill, new homes, we have all of those property records ready to go. One of the things that they did already review, and I only know this because I was working with FEMA Region 10 about the buyout lots and transferring those to us without a third-party intermediary with a conservation agenda, they had already reviewed all the vacant lots. They sent me a list of all of them, and they did a review at the end of 2022. And every one of them looked well-maintained and no structures and no problems for them. So I think it'll be a quicker afternoon because they have reviewed it so recently. It may just be one-off weird items that they want to go check out.
Just to follow up, they have never closed out the files, so.
I know. We never got the original Cav closure letter that we should have gotten. Hopefully, we'll get one that will encompass both of them. But I'm going to show them that we've never received it. One thing I wanted to add, because the rest of them are just my electrical projects, the divers did come and clean the reservoirs.
Oh, thanks.
Stony Point only had about four inches of sediment for 20 years.
Yeah.
Which is amazing. And so Jeff's just waiting on, they're going to give us a report of what they found, and we'll send that to you. They did both, yeah.
What'd they find up here?
I only, I only talked to Jeff in between him finding out about Stony Point, and then he was going up to see how they were going to hang on up at OA Hill. Because the domed, like, he's like, they could put their feet down here with their equipment. So he was going to go see how they were actually maneuvering that up there. Because it's not as easy, so.
Yeah. So they give us a report?
Yeah, they'll give us the findings, and then I asked him to ask them if they had any video so that we could see that also. But yeah, so that did get done. So it was a lot less sediment than we were worried because we really, none of us had been here prior when it had happened, so we didn't know. But I wanted to let you guys know that did happen. And then I'm just working with the electrician to try and get all of those items done. And none of the, so a little background, none of the poles, the one long pole was bent, was tweaked pretty good of the Grandstand demo. The other one was a shorty. It was wood, and then it was a metal pole the rest of the distance. So I'm trying to outfit a pole that meets the needs for the camera hub, something reasonable, and then I'll bring you guys back monetary information. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Doesn't seem to be.
Okay.
Thank you, Josette.
You're welcome.
Items from the mayor and counselors. I have none. I have one. Okay.
I am apologizing for taken dismissal of, of work from Columbia County, as I said, fired, but it was dismissed, separation of employment from Columbia County Sheriff's
Thank you, Counselor.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else? Action item summary.
So the only item I have is signing the bill of donation with Free Wheelers.
Well, thank you for being here tonight, Free Wheelers, and, and thank you for everyone's participation tonight. So I'll adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-five. Meeting adjourned.
Joe, I'm going to go print a clean one. Something on the back of it.